Perfect. And who do we have on Zoom tonight?
Robin, W, Richard Dyer, Raymond, Dan Riley. There was a blueberry, it's to be forgotten.
All right. I'm so pleased to see so many people here. I want everyone to have a voice in their opinion on topics and we're all going to be respectful. Please direct any comments forward and oops, so sorry. Any comments forward towards this luck board and not towards each other, please. Um, I do ask so that we don't have any interruptions because we have one half hour. We have a long agenda for the rest of this luck board meeting. So if we can have everyone shut their ringers off and put their phones away and uh how about? Thank you, everybody. As a standard, I think um the selectmen, I'll shut mine off and put it away. If we could all do that, that would be great. When we start the public session, just let people talk.
Yep, um, I think everybody knows what it's about.
Yeah. Do you want me to start with correspondence? Are we going to read all this or did you put copies out there for everyone now?
Mr. Riley's on.
Excellent.
If he wants to.
Yeah, let's call for comments. It's Mr. Riley said, we'd love to hear from him.
I guess I have to let them all in. I didn't know I created a waiting room. Hold on.
Was this copied from Facebook? I think I read this on Facebook too.
Um, please drop that in. You can hear you now, I think.
Sorry. Good evening, Mr. Riley. Welcome to the meeting. We would love to have your input if you're ready. I don't think you can hear, huh?
He said he may not have good service.
Hello?
There he is, yay.
There we go. Sorry, we're in a, we're in a campground in outside of Tampa. Um, trying to get a connection here, so I apologize for that. Um, I wrote a note to the Board of Selectmen. Um, I gave it to Leanne. I'm not sure if you received that, but it pretty much states our situation and what we're thinking of in terms of Darrington Road. I think it's stuff we've already said in the past, a lot of things. Um, I guess my main, my main issue is there are certain people that seem to be against Darrington Road being plowed. And I'm just trying to get some input into why, why that would be, what their rationale is for that. Do they, do they not want us to be able to get access to our house in the winter for some specific reason that I'm not aware of? Um, and I'm just trying to get some, a handle on that situation. Did you hear me?
Yeah, we can. I'm just looking for any public comment. If Lenny would like to stand up, he's, are you going to address what he's saying?
I don't object to Darrington Mill being plowed in winter. And I did some homework. Darrington Road was never discontinued or abandoned.
We've got that. We've just closed the winter maintenance.
It was closed to winter maintenance in 1992 and then 10 years later in 2002. But uh, there were different points. First, it was Davenport Road to Chris Darrington's place where Davenport uh intercepted with Darrington. I don't have a dog in this fight, I just like facts. In 2007, at town meeting, Darrington Road was brought up, winter plowing, and the line moved to 298 Darrington Road because the Jaspers lived up there. So what that says to me is there's a precedent for moving the line for plowing due to people living there. Uh, and in 2022, it was brought up again and discontinued for winter maintenance. Now, last year, there was quite a lot of concern.
What about 2012? So I see that goes every 10 years?
Oh, yeah, yeah, 2012 there too. Um, what I did was look at the town meeting books because I just wanted to understand the situation. So um, because it was never a discontinued road, it was supposed to be maintained for summer driving, which it wasn't. So if it had in fact cost $70,000 to bring it up to snow, that would have been a cheap price for 30 years of neglect. So those seem like salient facts to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, would you like to just stand up? Mr. Riley, can you hear?
Yeah, we hear very well. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful.
I'd like to just sort of follow on um with what Lenny said. It seems to me that there might have been an argument to say if no one is living there through the winter, that that's a reasonable justification to discontinue plowing. Um, but in fact, when people are going to be living there through the winter, it seems to me it's hard to justify. Although I again understand if it needed $70,000 of upgrade to be plowable, that it might be something that had to be planned for in, in terms of financing that. But it would seem to me the town would be obligated to make that upgrade um as they do for other roads that are in poor shape. Um, so I also find it interesting. Um, there are two houses and we're looking at from 298 to the end of the road, um, four tenths of a mile. So we're talking about plowing an additional four tenths of a mile. Just for an exercise, I looked at a few roads um near me. So for example, the intersection of Green Acres Road on Godding Road to the end of Godding Road is a mile. There are five houses on that stretch. That makes it a linear density of five houses per mile. The same linear density of two houses per four tenths of a mile on Darrington Road. From the corner of Green Acres Road to Godding Road is six tenths of a mile, of which there are three houses. That makes it also a, a density of five houses per mile. If you look at from Godding Road on Green Acres Road, from Godding to the end of Green Acres Road or to the essentially the Craskey's driveway is also four tenths of a mile. Um, and there's one house. So we are plowing comparable areas now. Uh, and yet we're resisting plowing. If, if we again deny plowing um at the next town meeting, then we don't seem to have a consistent policy.
So I just want a clarification. It's four tenths of a mile out and back? It's four tenths of a mile out and back?
From point A to point B is four tenths.
So they have to come back?
Well, I.
But they always charge them. Oh, I.
If you're plowing, you're plowing Godding Road, you don't, well, I guess you do, I guess you do plow. Since you only plow half of the road for all roads, presumably every road you go down and back, so.
But we're only charged for the mile. We're not charged for a mile one direction. You want mile.
Bottom line is, I do standardize. And that's what I was doing. I was trying to standardize by looking at the number of houses per unit distance of the road. And so I have at least three examples of equivalent density or less dense. So less dense an area where we currently do plow.
Yeah.
So if the road is now plowable and that additional four tenths of a mile, it's hard for me to understand what our RVs would be to not plow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good clarification. Ben, yes?
We keep drawing the figure around the 70 something hours. Last year when we had town meeting, I was asked to put together a quick figure of what it would be of it. Um, I threw a number that was sound high because I was unsure what kind of issue we were going to run into on Tuesday. Um, I wasn't even familiar with the road. And also a year ago, I was kind of against this thing because I was learning the understanding that it was legally discontinued. And we found since then, it's not legally discontinued. And then it caused a lot of confusion and all this problem and water took through there. And we have spent $70,000 on Darrington Road, but it's not on just the end of Darrington Road where these people want to be plowed. We had, he had worked our way from the bottom of the hill up the first hill. Then the section that was open back, maybe years back from Davenport up to Josh Jasper's. That had a lot of damage all the way down through there. The actual Darrington here that's asking the why? I probably spent 25,000, maybe 30 up in there because I had to replace that big four foot diameter culvert that washed out up in there. And, and we got some ditching there to help prevent it from happening again. Uh, we had a couple of culverts we had to replace. Uh, I sent an AC and P to set those poles back so it would be possible to follow. And the road is not that bad up in there now. And if we put a little bit of surface ground on there in a few places, you're really only looking at the cost for plowing another mile, which is $7,000 or something.
Um, can you explain how much service gravity you're talking, just so we have an idea?
Uh, if we accept this year's road budget as I, as I can put it in, I have included in probably $10,000 from Josh Jasper's, some in his area left years um all the way to the end. This other gravel would be going to add in on that road. So my budget is not with just the upper end. So your cost to here to open that road for five months is what you looked at last. You're looking at $7,000 something to plow it. This year's budget.
And the 10, and the 10,000 for the gravel?
Well, this year's budget, the gravel was accepted is working to my Darrington Road budget for gravel. All the places that we need up here. Uh, because obviously this year we had problems. The school department had to stay off that road for a couple of weeks because of mud. Godding Road also I put in for gravel to do some work on that because the bus wouldn't go in around us. Um, they've been having to bring the kids out. So our cost to actually go up in there and plow that up for the end this year. It's not nearly what we were looking at last year. You're really only looking at the cost of plowing a mile of road. Um, and a little maintenance each year. It's like we do on the rest of all the roads around town.
And Darrington.
Well, Darrington Road is going to have a few roads up in there anyway, but they're all trucks to get up in there to deliver heating oil. Um, I don't think they can get in there. It's pretty muddy there, that's the top of everything. So whether it's far or not, there's going to be some gravel put in there just so the old trucks or whatever delivery trucks I have can get up in there.
Yep, oops. Thank you, Ben. Kathleen, you were next.
Um, no, I was just going to say, if I were to move on a, on a, in a property, knowing that it wasn't a year round road, I wouldn't expect taxpayers to pay up more money for me alone to have that. Knowing, why, why would you build a year round home if you knew it wasn't accessible year round? That's.
Gotcha. And oh, you'll be right after. Yeah, well, actually, we've got, um, you go first and then we've got someone online and then you get to go. Yes.
We, I thought that probably with winter maintenance discontinued. Was it, was it town road, no winter maintenance? After we bought the property, found out that it was brought up every 10 years. Okay. So the first 10 years, we used this year round, irregardless. I broke a sled in many days in the winter time. Twenty years go by, it comes up again. Then I find out, well, wait a minute, it's a town road again. And it can be open to winter maintenance if it's voted. I'm a resident there from 2015 to present. So for those years, there was a number of years that I still pulled the sled in from Jaspers in the winter to get in and out. Then um, some neighbors came to my rescue when I was going through cancer treatments to get in and out of there. And a matter of fact, I had to buy a snowmobile, which I never used to shut family up because I was living in here. I had cancer treatments, right? So my neighbors came to my, my rescue and kept me open. In 2020, or yeah, I guess it was 2020, 20 years down the road. We find out that um, you can open it up for winter maintenance if it's brought in front of the town. And then I find out that, well, you're not supposed to be plowing. And it's because of liability, liability, you know, insurance companies liability, sue, sue me, sue the town, whatever. So I'm reading through this handout right here. There was a word on that table and it said in here that um, we recommend that municipality not authorized can don't plow on such rules for easier access. And the reason being, it may be poorly plowed by me or an emissary of mine and the town and, and/or I can be sued for liability. And this handout is right over there, I'm not sure.
Let's find the other man.
So I'm a resident. I pay my taxes. The Riley's, they have, they're not residents yet. They plan on being residents. They have, they have five days a week. We cannot get plowed by the town. You tell me why?
Thank you.
Somebody want to tell me why? Somebody proposed to that? You want to tell me why? Why you're opposed? Anybody?
Ben, as a road commissioner, do you have a reply to that? If not, I got to go with the order of the law. You do want to reply to him?
It's not reported.
Oh, okay. Richard Dyer?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Yeah, good. Uh, my understanding that uh, there, there have been those that are saying, well, we've, we've built it, we've dealt with this twice. And why are we bringing it up again? Well, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that since, since those uh, other discussions were had and decisions were made, uh, the uh, the road has been upgraded substantially to the point where, as I understand it, what you're talking about tonight has nothing to do with uh, gravel and culverts and all of that stuff. It simply has to do with plowing the road in the winter. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, Ben said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're only looking at the cost of plowing it.
So what's, so this is simply about, about uh, plowing the road in the winter?
Right. This year's project is the way I have it submitted in. We have a little bit of money to put up in here for gravel. So the only additional cost would be plowing one mile of road. We're not looking at the numbers that we're working at. Last year, and what worked, we didn't look in there this year. Uh, we're supposed to be reimbursed for quite a bit of that by BMO because I've been working with them here ever since the washout last period. And we're supposed to get reimbursed on that.
Which has been approved, right? I think it's been approved.
Well, they're working, they're still working, really.
I, I just have a couple of things to add. Um, one point I would make is the fact that when we close it to winter maintenance, even though it's only a part of the road, apparently the money that we receive from the state, from the local road support is cut in half for that piece of road because of the.
I don't know.
That would be have closed it to winter maintenance. So if we open that small piece back up to winter maintenance, we would continue to get the full amount for the force of state.
We would actually.
From like whatever.
Does that sound like you, Ben?
So we should just recognize that when we're talking about money.
The urban and the rural, if you initiate this program, are you going to call?
Local roads.
Oh. Moral?
Yes, uh, I just have a question. It appears uh, from testimony by people that like that the precedent has been set to move a bogey from uh, Davenport up to the Jaspers, I think, or whatever. And it's because they were living there for, for five. Now, if that's true, then when somebody else was in there and lives for five, I would think that the precedent has been set for Jaspers, that now you can go further up the road. Okay, now if Riley's get there for five, okay, then I believe the precedent has been set. Hey, he moved it up to them. Now, if you go further, if the road went further and somebody else moved it, I would think it's just a week for further and further up the road. That is my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I attended the last meeting when this came up and as far as myself goes, I'm not opposed to this family getting snow plowing. I also understand it's not a discontinued road, it was just discontinued maintenance on that road. What, what I was opposed to at the time and what many of them were, was raising the mill rate, an entire mill um, just for this one section. Now, Ben states it's roughly $7,000 to do this seven tenths of a mile. And the road I live on gives this town roughly $170,000 a year in property taxes. So one mill was extraordinary. So you know, if it can be in the budget and not raise the mill rate, that's one thing. I think that's the biggest thing that I and many others were opposed to at the time was that was an exorbitant amount of money to raise it for seven tenths of a mile. So we're not opposed to, you know, the road should be plowed. But you know, if, if $7,000 is the correct amount for uh, plowing, then why raise the mill rate, a whole mill for everybody in town for now on? So that was my issue.
Um, why is that? An issue I had to say before.
Oh, absolutely. I didn't realize, I'm so sorry.
My moral, I have to say, the other thing I was going to point out that I suspect that not a lot of people here have read is that there is actually a statute, 23 MRSA 2953. That says that if you are going to close roads for the winter maintenance, it is that at any time between May 1st and October 1st of any year, set forth that any road or roads or portion thereof in the municipality are so located with reference to population use and travel thereon that it is unnecessary to keep the road or roads maintained and open for travel during months of November, December, January, February, March or April, or any part of these. The municipal officers may, on their own initiative or competition of several, seven legal residents of the municipality at any of that time propose to close those roads. I don't think that the selectmen have, and I think it has been certainly more than before the last time that um, the roads were voted to be closed, had shown that they were not, that it was unnecessary to keep the road or roads maintained um, or open for travel during those months. I think that we have certainly heard people and we heard it at the last town meeting without, even though there were other votes taken, who said clearly, we need to be there, we need access. I live there. This gentleman has just said he had to get back and forth to cancer treatment with a snowmobile or, or pulling things into his house with a sled. I don't think that is the selectman showing that the road answering the state law, which says you had to show that it was not necessary or needed to be opened. So I think that it needs to be fixed.
I think Lenny was next.
Well, and the $70,000 figure is no longer relevant, never should have been the point of reference anyway because that road was always open for maintenance the rest of the year. And it simply was not maintained. So $70,000 would be cheap for 30 years of neglect, even though no rate is a concern. That, you know, that isn't even really a issue because that road is supposed to be maintained for summer travel.
For what? Well, I have an odd budget. Yeah, well, you're next, and then um.
No, I guess I would just like a comment on the, the cost for the town, et cetera. And um, the point is, seems to me every individual who lives in this town have and owns land in this town pays taxes. And they should be treated equally in terms of the service they receive. And if they aren't treated equally in terms of the service they receive, then they certainly should at minimum get a reduction in their taxes for not getting the services that everybody else gets in this town. So I, you know, it just seems to me we're not being fair to those individuals, even if they bought their property knowing that it wasn't being plowed at the time in the winter.
That's a good question.
And this gentleman has been living there, he says year round for 15 years or so, and who's been paying taxes as at the same rate everyone else is, but he's not getting that service from the town. So it seems to me he's paid a lot of money that he shouldn't have for not getting service.
Um.
Uh, yes, material and I, I get an education here. It seems like we were doing summer maintenance to it, but that's not acceptable to be plowed on, even though it's been maintained. I know we had a lot of ups and all, I mean, I'd fix that. But I think that was the question. What's the difference between summer maintenance and plow?
One of the biggest problems up in there was that big four foot diameter culvert that had to be changed. Because it wasn't fit the oil or leaving an oil. I'm surprised that that had become an issue long before this. But with all the rains last year, it kind of put the finish into it, being unsafe to the oil plant. Um, and it did through some other work with culverts to prevent the erosion. And now we can just get back on to a little maintenance and go a new year, the same as all other roads. I don't need for that far at all. This fell over here, $70,000. And that's pretty accurate because I think we figured it out a year or so ago and uh, change that mill rate one. No, I think it was around $70, $80,000. So you can look out below that. Uh, my, my, the cost of plowing that and whatever I get for a mile, and I think it's up to 72 or maybe 74, it's not 70. Um, the, the aunt, she had that, but it's either 72 or 74.
I had written down 71, but I don't know if that was last year or this year, so.
But for clarity, um, uh, summer maintenance, you don't maintain the road or?
All the years I've been road condition, there are a lot of, there's always some maintenance up to there. So whatever you did, the guy, the old farmhouse, the Ryland's home, it's not something they just went up in there and built. That was an old farmhouse that um, what was her name?
Grace, Grace Darrington.
The little man there.
Darrington.
And back in the early, back in the early seventies when we plowed up in there. My grandfather plowed these roads before I did. Back in the early seventies, I remember us plowing a few names. And when she passed away, it just kind of got, well, nobody's looking there, it's all buried. And when she passed away, it just kind of got, well, nobody's looking there, let's all hurry about it, and it, it will have a hundred number of years.
I'm, I'm still confused about. I'm gonna do the summer maintenance.
Just a moment.
Yep. Not plowable in the winter time.
Uh, so, our summer maintenance kind of is, was, and every road's a little bit of a different situation.
Sure.
If this road is highly traveled and it's got a lot of issues and we spend a little more, they the Ryland's have always been really good and never asked for.
Correct. Okay, can we leave like four other people that want to talk and I won't try to stay on track? Is that all right? Are you? You'll use the sentence twice and try to.
I'm still confused about, yeah, if, if you do summer maintenance, one question, one quick question. You do summer maintenance and it's not winter maintenance? No plowable. Can I get a oil truck up there in the summer to fill up my?
I give the attention on that one for a little bit of summer maintenance, so just keeping it, so the oil trucks can be there, delivery trucks. That's all we have done.
Richard? Thank you, Steve.
Yeah. Uh, I'll be real quick. Uh, I think in the past, there's been some talk about the stone plow being able to turn around. And I'm quite sure that if they plow all the way up to the half million dollar barn, there's plenty of room to turn around in that yard up there.
Working on easement. We're going to give us an easement.
The ordinance says a deed of, um, hundred by hundred easement, so that's what we'll work towards. Um, yes? Oh, no, wait, I'm sorry. Uh, well, I just had one quick thing, it's a piece, a piece of this park or reference. Uh, Bim had told me that Grace Darrettson died in nineteen seventy-four. I moved here in seventy-five.
I'm not sure.
Well, like right around, right around it, in any case, so, so she died, and the selectmen just quit plowing. Which seems a little odd, because don't we have to have an order to, for closure? But in fact, the law stating that you had to formally close the roads, uh, discontinue a road for winter maintenance, uh, came in in nineteen seventy-nine. Which explains why, when I moved here in the month of May, November rolling out, they just showed up and plowed. I didn't have that. They knew somebody was living up that road, even though they might have wished they had discontinued, if they hadn't. And somebody lived up there, they just showed up, wow. Okay. Yep.
I'm questioning this with them. Is that road ready to be plowed in the winter now?
Yeah, we just got a little bit of service drive up to there, which I had a budget in this year's budget. The only cost you is going to be for a pile of miles of
So I don't know why we haven't been able to.
I don't think it's not.
I'd say, I think I, I I would agree.
Educated as well, can I?
Yeah.
Ken?
There has been a question there. We have a road standard ordinance. It says roads such as that in your, in the ordinance.
I was involved in that one. I was involved.
Ben, can we, can we talk, please?
Please answer it. It says on the ordinance that roads should be built at eighteen feet wide. Does that road, eighteen feet wide?
That ordinance that you kind of raised. When I worked on that with the ordinance committee, that is if someone wants to open up a road that's legally discontinued or a new, or a new road, it has to meet the standards that we have.
Uh, I know that.
And specifically was on that. If I said, let's not force ourselves on our own back roads to have to build up to a standard.
Okay, and my reply to that is the ordinance says, as well as roads currently not maintained by the town, existing roads. That is dealt with right now.
Which lane?
I don't like to interrupt, this I don't know. I just want to make sure that you follow your own road ordinance, because you require people that want to put a new road in, for one standard, you require a standard for subdivisions. But if ten roads, it's up to you on the condition of the road, how wide it should be for insurance purposes for these people's houses, or when they sell more property, then they decide to get insurance and the insurance company goes on and says, we can't get a fire truck in here, can't turn around. Now it's the town's expense to bring it to the standard spelled out in the ordinance of eighteen feet wide. And your road commission is out, and you agree that this is should be done. Doesn't mean.
I just made that on a discontinued road that's legally discontinued.
It doesn't say.
Because that.
The ordinance, the town say, discontinued road. It says, such as winter maintenance, written in article seven. Why does it say?
We did not have all, such as, on all of our existing town roads that we do work.
So it's subject to.
We, we wrap it up. We wrap it, so that the town roads that are already existing.
Thank you, Ben.
We can just do what we need.
Wendy?
It is not about the given's opinion. I was the chair of your municipal at that time. The ordinance went through the select board, through the town lawyer. It was accepted, but the intent was legally discontinued roads.
It doesn't say that.
That they wanted to reopen would be brought down.
Then you show me anywhere where it says discontinued roads when you were saying. It's not, doesn't say the word discontinued anywhere, man.
Were not maintained.
It says existing town roads, and then out of seven, such as winter maintenance. So what was it written for?
I would have to study some more.
You can have that, we can stop.
If there's nobody else, we'd like to move forward to the next agenda item and start the select for needed.
You want to face it on that, with that.
Everyone? Thank you so much. I think Wendy's trying to say something. Absolutely. I think what really happened here was when Grace Darrettson passed away, he's about that time, she was the only one living on that road. And the town's plowing. And when she passed away, because the town stopped plowing, because nobody's living up there now. Now, the same thing up here, the Bim's brother, where he lives now, his grandparents lived there, the town plowed that. And it was called, it was called Doragami Road. Right, so the town plowed that. When Tal died, by the goodness of the heart, the town still kept it plowed, because of Dora, his wife, his big grandmother. So after she passed away, then town stopped plowing. But then we just continued. And it's, we discontinued it. Yeah, really?
One, one last question for clarification. So is this a new and separate issue? Or is this the same issue we discussed the last time? Or is the town wanting to raise the mill rate tax-wise for Darrettson Road?
No. We haven't done the budget yet, but I'm assuming by the numbers that Lee is looking at. Well, I was just, I was just pointing out to Kathy, when, for, our proposed budget, excuse me, on stuff we read, in our proposed budget, on the final page or next to the final page, is proposed mill rate of zero point zero one nine six, which is pretty close to what we have now, yeah?
That's without the audit, that's missing up, without the new split budget, but.
It's not finished.
Does not include the thirty thousand in fund balance either.
And we also only have estimated numbers from county tax and, uh, county tax and school and so forth.
Okay, so I think that's the misconception, is that this was revisiting the same exact issue and trying to raise the mill rate again. If that's not the issue, this is a completely different issue. You're not trying to raise the mill rate specifically.
No, we're always trying to not.
For Darrettson Road.
We're always trying to not, I think. And, and we'll wrap up with them. You've got one minute.
Right, you know, my summer road budget, I think we only had an increase, I think we did it six or seven percent. Um. I have no record based on overall town on just that one road. Um. I am going to have an article that I'm working with the selectmen, and I'm going to be working with the budget committee on possibly paving four roads if we're constantly being asked pay. I'm hoping to be set to not. There's no paving in my budget, and I don't want you to get in all of this tonight, and well, I might, like, explain it to a lot of you. I have four roads that are possibly, if the townspeople want to have a one-stocker road, Darrettson, a mile or two, three, that third section of the homie road. And I'll have numbers and accurately these will flood, if it's some cost to do that. And what will change, I don't know, but I don't want to get into all that stuff.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for being all wonderful with each other. Really appreciate you all coming out. We're going to now start our select board meeting, so um, if, uh, anyone wants to switch out, use the little girls' boys' row, absolutely great, and we'll, um, move forward. Thank you again very much. Was that the end of the publish? Um, you never, very well. Yes. All right, would you like to call the meeting to order?
Twelve seventy.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have that.
All right. Why if they don't know what they want, maybe they're out of the, it's like more into this than we're just about. Nope, nope. Obviously not. All the issues. Obviously, that's the only thing they can do. Yeah. That's why I gave them a chance to go so long. All right, like to call the meeting to order, we'd like to approve the minutes from March seventh, um, of the last select board meeting. And, um, March eleventh, quiet please. And March eleventh, select board, uh, budget meeting workshop. Let me get a second. All in favor? I think we'll sign this, but the next one, approve the, um, warrants, warrant eighteen and payroll warrants for March thirteenth and March twentieth.
She mentioned the additional thirty dollars for that training.
Oh, you want me to do that now versus the?
Probably, if you're going to back the check.
Okay, yeah, all right. So we approved the training for like fifty-five dollars, but it ended up being eighty-five dollars. So it's additional thirty dollars more, which is in this warrant that we're going to sign. Do I need to get a vote first? Are we all good?
No, you can either approve it or.
Okay, I approve it. We all approve it. Absolutely. Do I need to sign this? We're all good.
No.
Great.
You made the motion.
I, I made the motion, any second?
I did, I said.
Great, all in favor? All opposed, wonderful. Look good. You want that one? Back something, stick it in my mind. All right, um, so we have an RSU ten report. Has anyone, um, been to the school meetings?
Anyone's wondering from the twenty-fifth, that, the Buckfield community senior in school in regards to the budget coming up Monday to twenty-fifth, that always not to be missed. They want to get rid of a lot of JV sports in our school, and it's like, we have minimal amount of sports for these kids. Mountain Valley has how many border lines, you know, we don't have football, we don't have, I don't even think we have boys' baseball, we don't have all the other districts. But they want to, uh, uh, JVs, what minimal stuff these kids at the school have. It's like and they get everything, and we don't get anything. I'm sorry, I'm from that area, I'm from Rumford originally.
That's part of the whole RSU, is what you're talking about.
Ten, yeah, it's Mountain Valley, you know, and it's like, why are they cutting so many of our sports? It's not fair to these kids. This is what little bit these kids in this area have.
I'd love to make a suggestion that those people that are available Monday to twenty-fifth, if they would consider going over to Buckfield High School, listening and seeing the, the current budget. I don't believe we've gotten the, uh, information yet on school budget stuff.
I haven't received any.
No. I don't think they've approved anything yet. So.
Yeah, they don't want to allow the kids to use that gym, I guess they had some type of a contract in the bat as well. They want a patato.
Apparently they're building a JV school. Hmm? Apparently they're building a, building, uh, building up a gym on campus, so the kids don't have to walk down the road to get there, because I guess it's considered a bit of a hassle to just send the kids to walk down the, on the, on the state highway there. I did mention, and I don't want to be rude, but if, if we could make sure our ringers and stuff and our phones are away, so that we're respectful, so we can move through this budget and not get, and that stands for all of us. Okay? All right, moving on to. I was just putting the school budget behind on my calendar. I just saw a few people in the, in our. No, you did just talk, be sure we be there on the, on the, on Mondays. Okay. So we have a road report next. Um, is there anything besides what Bim just said?
Keep it clear, Steve.
No? I can tell you that, um, uh, the budget for the road, road part just came in, and you went through it with the, uh, select board, and it is about between six and seven percent higher, but it's got a lot of good stuff in it, so. Uh, next, the costful report. Hey, Steve, anything going on?
Yep. Quiet out there.
Love quiet. Cold out there too, what happened with spring?
We're surfing.
Nobody's surfing. Who, good. All right, uh, code, CEO, the code enforcement report, do we have anything?
No.
Nobody's building or?
We've had a few buildings from that.
A few buildings from that, cool. My understanding is Steve's moving some of that stuff, you know, they're away. Yeah, he's in Florida, right? Yep, been, been taking calls and stuff. Yeah, I know people are, that bought, that Johnson's place are doing a lot of building in there. Well, rebuilding and tearing down, so. How about the ACO report? Have we gotten anything this month from her? There was this one, and you had. I'm going on Facebook. She caught two cats and, uh, on Facebook. Hello? Dave?
So we have more stray cats about this. And we extend, where we bring them. And
They go to response.
In the past, I've tried to call the JCO.
And I dress that with her too, right?
I do not get very much.
My understanding, they're actually taking some right now, responsible pet cats.
I don't, I don't think residents can bring them there themselves. I think they have to go.
With her?
With Ronnie. I'm pretty sure that was the problem last night.
Well, I'm not going to leave a cat in cages for two or three days for the fur ACO. So.
I will send her a message.
We'll be calling the board when that happens.
Yeah. I'm gonna, um. He answers me right off, so if you have a problem, call me up.
Okay.
Hey, um, I have your number, can I go ahead and have her call you tonight or right away? Do you have a cat?
Oh, we don't have him yet. But I caught him.
But they're around tomorrow.
They'll just fail.
Barnes are like that.
They can be.
Thank you, Dave.
Pick them up my sister, she has them, she takes them, gets them fixed, moved in.
Well, there's another option.
She got four cats now, none of them is hers.
Yeah, well, that would come down. Okay, do we have, uh, any new information from the planning board? And ordinance committee.
Um, yeah, we have their agenda.
Yep, so they're meeting on April third. Um, I know that, uh, we already, she did a live report last time, so. All right, fire warden report. Nothing? No fires, great. We look no fires. Um, is there, uh, we've got your treasurer's report here, yes?
Yep, um. We had one tax foreclosure for twenty-twenty-one tax liens, and Saturday was the last day of pay, and I went on Facebook and tried to find people. And Monday morning, I got a phone call from Mr. Nye. He
Welcome, thanks for coming.
Didn't receive the notice in the mail for some reason, but I think he's willing to take care of that.
I think he'd be very happy for them to do that.
If you agree to let him.
What we all have in the past. We are not in the property business, we want him to have his property.
So I think, I got a story that's something that we have a issue.
Can we do this now, or do we have to wait till later on in the? Nope. Yeah, I'm sorry, everyone's all right. So as part of the treasurer's report, and if you don't mind, of course, we're going to do it in, in secret, but if you don't.
I like small town community stuff, like, I grew up in Rumford as well, Rumford Center, lived in Stone for quite a few years, so I like this.
Oh, your dad. That's cool, that's cool.
So, um, basically, everything's been kinda getting ahead of me lately, family and all, and. Just been chaotic, I got a new phone last year, never bothered to fill the ring, uh, Leanne, sorry, um, on the new phone number. Um, wasn't checking the mail like I should, just, it was a year of just things. And so, yes, my sister got ahold of me, I was, I was on a hike with my sons, and, oh, my sister was like, what? What's that all about, and then my sis, then my wife said that she'd gotten a Facebook as well.
Yeah, I was sending messages.
Yeah, it was great, but it, but again, it was too little, too late at that point for me, I just um, didn't have enough feelers out there to to get the messages and stuff, so. Um, Leanne gave me the total amount due, and I did get a check for that from the bank to to straighten out if possible.
So you have that, that entire amount at this time?
Yes.
Well, I would like to move that we accept this and and uh, and uh, move forward.
Absolutely, I second that.
Um, to sell the property, quit claiming that.
Means you were, you were missing a quick claim from the town, because we own it now.
Okay, I see.
Technically, and we don't have any foreclosures, only foreclosure is an automatic process, after it's gone so, so long, all of a sudden. It just happens, so we have to come up with a arrangement, and some people have to make payments, and some people never do make those payments, but. Most of the time, we need to find a way to get people and their property connected.
Reunited, yes.
And it means basically you'll have a quick claim.
Okay, well, I think that's what it was before then anyhow, so.
Yeah, there you go.
So, do you want to vote on that? Alright, all in favor?
Well, thank you very much, really appreciate that.
And I hope Leanne took the liberty to get that quick claim deed all done.
No, that will be on this agenda.
I'm sorry. You've got several witnesses.
That's from Ken's brother, that's great, so, yes.
We're so glad we had you. Thank you, Leanne.
No, thank you, that was, that was so quick and easy, it was just.
Been really painful before.
And here's hoping that coming years, a little less chaos.
Oh, I hope so too.
You updated your phone number?
I, she does have my new phone, and I gotta say that when I, when you said Ken, I, I, for a second, I was called to the floor immediately, but it was the gentleman sitting behind me, so. Thanks so much.
Yeah, we'll meet on the first and the third Tuesday.
So the next one will be the first Thursday, April fourth, I think.
The calendar over there.
Thanks for.
Thank you so much. That portion is done, and we've got the other treasurer's report, is there anything, we know we've changed it for the uh. Training, what else do we need to know about treasurer's report this month?
Going on yet?
How did we do on um, people paying their taxes before the due date?
For which one?
For, for the ones that were, those people are closed.
I had one person come in Saturday after I contacted her, and she paid for three lots, and those two were the only.
They were the only two that we had, and both paid. Alright, so nothing else that we need to know about, how are we doing on our interest from Northeast Bay?
I'll let you know at the end of the month.
Excellent. Alright, cemetery committee report, do we have anything?
We're all still alive.
We're on the side here.
I have plans whenever you guys can put them out.
Alright, solid waste committee report, I, I know that the solid waste committee doesn't have enough people, so the meeting got canceled. And I wanna remind everyone in this room, that if they'd like to be a part of the solid waste committee, we are looking for votes.
There's forms on the table, we can fill out.
Alright, calendar reminders, March twenty-seventh, we have a seven PM budget meeting right here, and the budget committee will be attending. I think Al will be missing, cause he's going to, he and Bonnie left this morning. For a cruise.
They are, they, our phone called me, I, I gave them a call about something, she called me and she said, yeah, we just have to pencil, I said, oh my god, I forgot that you were gonna be around.
April first, here on Monday night, uh, planning board meeting, um, oh, I wanna remind you that. Uh, we, the school budget meeting is coming up on March twenty-fifth, April third is the ordinance committee meeting at seven. And that's what we have for calendar reminders, unfinished business, bulky collection, June twentieth, proposal and guidelines. Dave Owen. What a great job we did, thank you so much for pulling that together, so darn quick.
And we have a couple of good examples.
I have a couple of verbal ones that they gave to.
Let's get to, here we go. Would you like to use this for us?
So, I took the time to talk to Alan, and put together some realistic numbers. I went off actuals of the last three years from my bulky waste pickup. I put in the hourly rates under the new contract, um, which is on the right-hand side. Estimated, basically a hundred, these are bulky ways, that may reduce, honestly, if you reduce or limit. Limit the amount of waste that people can actually put out. The last three years, it was give or take around a hundred thousand, so, that's what I used for a number for that. Um, I took actuals of hours for trash truck, roll-off truck. Box truck, and their laborers. That being said, the labor part, trucking slash labor is gonna be, or potentially seventeen thousand. Eight hundred and eighty dollars. Versus, if we had, talking with Alan, he doesn't feel that we can do the whole town in, say, two days. His recommendation is that we split the town into two separate Saturdays, but we take, okay. The north side of town will come on this day, the south side of town will come on this day, or vice versa.
On a separate weekend to be proposing.
Yes, a Saturday, a Saturday full day is what I'm proposing. Um, that way, people, most people don't work on Saturday, and people that don't live here, that have camps, are able to come up, and actually come as well. I know you're gonna have people complaining, oh, we can't bring it down, we don't have a truck, or I'm too old, but, you know what? Look at all these other towns that use this, Buckfield, Sumner, you have to bring it to their transfer station. Can't, you have to bring it to their transfer station, Auburn doesn't offer a curb side pickup for bulky waste anymore.
Oh, actually, they didn't, and then I think they have, have changed.
They have since canceled it again, that's a work in stock, we should stay up.
From what I knew, they, they didn't offer, so. So, you know, it's isn't like a, where. We're not taking something away, per se, but, yes, we've all, we've had it for what, ten years now, fifteen years? Ever taken.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
But, getting to the point now with people, there are a lot of people that use it. Um, and I personally feel that there's a lot of garbage coming from out of, out of towns.
No question.
And the residents are actually ending up paying. So, one way or another, I think you need to curb that cost, whether it be, you stick with your, your curbside, plucking waste. And you look at the hourly rates and labor costs versus, you know, having a drop-off site. One way or another, um, I think you need to come up with, with a way to reduce it. This was my theory on, on how we, I think we can reduce costs. Um, with not a lot of disruption to people, we're still offering a service. But, instead of bringing it to the end of your road, you're gonna have to bring it here, but.
Two thousand, two thousand is what approved curbside work.
Two thousand?
That's, that's one of them, but, but, you know, something that could not be right, because we, I just went through a whole bunch of reports last night. And uh, we had a number of articles, course, some of them were protest copies, we could see what passed and taped, and some of them were brand new copies. You couldn't really tell, but there were a number of times we, uh, one in particular, there were five different articles discussing uh, waste. And that wasn't even, wasn't even considering on George's one, uh, but that was, uh, one of them was. Whether we vote to continue to have our curbside bulky waste, and also a transportation, which we did for a time. Let me show you the problem. Uh, and, and at that point, we did not offer a curbside bulky, because we had transportation, and people would operate on a small pond. It was really out in the middle of, it was supposed to go where it was defined.
So, David, with your proposal, the total estimate is fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-five, based on a hundred tons, right?
No, so that is, so cost comparison, yes.
Yes, fourteen two five five.
Correct.
And based on a hundred ton, to go door side, is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
I estimated sixty ton, which he did us, a drop-off site, Alan feels it would probably be less than that, but. I'm kinda wanting to be realistic, so, someone, if we do end up, if you do end up doing this, and we end up getting eighty tons or whatever. You know, this is kind of a, a guessing game, at this point, but, I think it's realistic. Um, I did up our metal a little bit, but that's, that's minor, because, you know, we end up losing a lot of metal. At curbside, because everyone goes around and picks it up. Um, I know you're gonna have to complain, well, I don't have a truck, or I'm too old, well, you know what, most. Everyone has friends, neighbor, or family, or someone that is willing to, to help, so. I think the benefits definitely outweighs the negatives. Were, cost saving was about thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty bucks.
Thirteen thousand sixty bucks.
That's a lot of money.
That's a ton of money.
If this doesn't work out to be the reality, could we go back?
Of course.
Question, there are no questions, except the one town has.
Um, I'm not sure who was first, whether it was you or Ken.
I, I tried calling Archie's this week, I tried Monday, and then I called again Wednesday, I'm trying it, cause when he was here, he mentioned that Hartford's. Um, tonnage is a lot more than a lot of other towns, and was, he, it was astronomical, even the girl on the phone. Mentioned it, the girl on the phone had mentioned it too, so, um, I was kinda, I was trying to get an idea. They didn't wanna give me the names of the towns, but I said, can you at least give me the, the population and what their tonnage was, and. I wanted to get it before the meeting tonight, but they had a death of a family, a nephew passed, so. I said, no worries, but, yeah, unexpectedly too, so that's sad.
And a ton of deaths last couple weeks, Ken?
Well, it sounds like a great proposal, and thank you, David, for doing all the legwork on. I would like to recommend that we try to implement this year, try, and once it, if it doesn't work.
You know, maybe we can get them up a little volunteer, and, you know, you know, maybe we.
A capable operator, he wouldn't charge his load. So, you know, I'd volunteer a couple days, as long as I was available, so you know.
Yeah.
Um, I'm thinking maybe the APB or some of your club might, might help out, but, you know, I think we need. You need to put some guidelines in place, if this is something you wanna unfold, like, you know, I think IDs. Should be required, and whether you're not, if you're not a resident.
You can't require that, that's.
Why?
Not anyone, like, if you're a volunteer, you can't ask for someone's ID. It's confidential.
Have one employee.
If they're.
From the town, that's gonna have a tax record. To check off, okay, they brought in his load on this day, you know. I think there has to be a way, but otherwise, how do you even know?
If it's right here at the office, is the office not gonna be open, somebody can't, they can't go into the office first and get some type of a.
I think that, that would be too much traffic.
Get their little wrist, wristband.
I think it'd be too much traffic and.
If you can't, cause if you can't pay IDs.
They could do, they could do like a check off, you, what's your address?
I, I think we can have.
Can't do that, like the voting thing, you can't do a check off, no? You know how you have the sheet with the names and addresses, you can't do a check off, oh, cause we're volunteers.
Yeah, I could, that's like the committee book or something.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to suggest, I'd like to suggest, I would try to take on this, and you can, not decide tonight, because, you know. It seems to me there's a lot of difference, there's a lot of moving parts. For us to consider, I understand what the community's saying, that our bulky waste is coming up in, in June. You know, outside doesn't look like June is coming that soon, but it'll be here before we know it, but, you know, try to put it off for everybody, I think that, you know, it's not a bad idea for us to. Uh, put this in our pipe and smoke it for a little while before we actually decide on it, Ken?
I know this is in Auburn, I've heard it to Auburn, but when you're out in residency, at the Auburn recovery, steam recovery plant, you have to show them as a proof of residency. Because Auburn residents get the dump for free, the household garbage, how this town people have to pay like, way you mean. You show them your registration, be able to register in Auburn, then you can dump, so just as a suggestion.
They would still have to be an employee, except confidential information.
Um.
Yeah, there is an employee.
But, but I put sixteen hours.
For a town of forty, yeah, to be there.
Put sixteen hours in, in this spreadsheet, thank you.
That one person can be done.
So, you know, put a town, deputy clerk, be the one, as a town employee.
Yes, I don't know if she wants to stand out there for eight hours though.
It's okay, you can be constable, as long as you don't be on a twenty seven.
Could be a slipboard member.
I'll do it.
Lenny had her hand up for you, and then you're.
Oh, it's just, you, you'd have the same limit, pick up truckload. You'd, so you would have to have some sort of check, otherwise. If this is the point, exactly, myself.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
Steve?
I'm treating it all right, one, one evening, nighttime, with the dump work, the metal.
They'd be hauling it every day.
No, at nighttime, people will be stealing out of the metal.
Well, that's why the haul, my other opinion is, that they would. Yes, so, I mean, this is, like I said, there's still a lot of moving parts, that's why I said, let's not, uh, you know, let's not rush this decision, because there's a lot of moving parts. And I think this could be a bit complicated, I would say.
The other thing was, I was thinking, if you do go that way, you just send a letter to every taxpayer in Hartford, it's gonna be on it, I know it's gonna be a lot of work, but. This is just what I bring to you, one time dump, this thing.
You know, it's not a bad problem, because, because we're making a huge change, I mean, this is a sea change, in what we've been doing. For, some people are always trying to buy off bulky waste, but kind of. This is a huge change for people, and I think we probably owe them a lot, to let them know when something's going on. Ordinarily, we try to do this with Hartford news, the select board letter, sometimes we miss things that are important that are coming up. But something like this is a little bit too important to take a chance of missing, I mean, needless to say, we'll also have this, like, the select board letter coming up for the Hartford news. Ahead of the uh, a letter, ahead of the town meeting, so we can. A letter, ahead of the town meeting, so we can talk a little bit then, but. I think the letter is a, that or a postcard is a very good idea.
Postcard get lost though, but Steve, I, I'm sorry, cause I know that we interrupted you.
So back to the tonnage, uh, issue, Archie was saying. I know we have a rule for trash that says you have five bags, five cans of weed, blah, blah, blah. And, I mean, I, we have our dinners, we have over, we store people, being children, grandchildren, we have my kids. And there was one time I had one extra bag out and David wouldn't take it, cause it was more than a liter, so if you, if you complain about tonnage. We are, we do our rules and how much trash we lot put out, and he does follow that, he'll be taking any more than what it says he's supposed to take. Just wanted to.
David?
So. Just to clarify what's in here, I figured a loader with an operator for, for two days, sixteen hours. Um, a town employee for sixteen hours. I figured having at, at least one trash truck onsite with an employee of Archie's for two days.
You probably want a little.
Yep, the trash trucks, so anything that are like smaller, smaller bulky ways.
Some smaller trucks, folks, a lot of weekly trash.
Well, anything, a lot of stuff they won't pay for the trade, so anything that can go in here, it's gonna be easier than putting it in the roll off. Um, I figured that the loader will actually help people with, like, how it's gonna refrigerate or whatever.
Yeah.
Will be able to load it into the roll off, cause they're gonna be fifty guy roll offs and they're about seven feet tall. I figured roughly twelve, twelve roll offs, fifty guy roll offs, that'd be six each weekend. Um, probably have a, a smaller one there for, uh, tires and, uh, metal. I mean, I think it's at least, at least worth a shot, so.
That's a lot of money to save for you. That's almost half.
I'm willing to help in any way you guys want.
Now, would that be something you do this year or would, is that something?
Uh, should these be posed for this year on the twenty?
We're, we're doing it on a Saturday, though, it's the twenty, I believe, Saturday.
We would change dates.
Don't do it on the twenty second, cause I can't volunteer if I need to volunteer.
I'm working on.
My son's getting there. Oh. Can't do that.
What, you wouldn't give up your son's way for that?
I'm not, my lusty, uh, come at all, cause I don't want him to bring anything home.
We don't need, we don't even put stuff out, this is what amazes me is how much garbage people have and it's like. Yeah, we get a lot of stuff in our house, but it's good stuff that I wouldn't throw in the trash.
Trying to get rid of me.
It, it's like people are just talking, I think it'd probably take two years to give it a fair evaluation, cause the first year is gonna be rough.
Right, oh, you mean, yes.
Like, you know, I mean.
Ken?
I noticed people are already putting stuff out.
Yes.
Um, I was gonna mention that, thank you, Ken, is that we need to, if we could get, um, some Facebook posts and stuff out there. The ordinance committee last year put forward and the select board agreed, they have two weeks before to put things out and a week to clean up. If anything that wasn't taken, so we just wanna remind people, cause we do not need the next several months with. Especially, we're probably gonna get snow till June, we don't want plow up of couches and trash. You think you guys can do that?
Yeah, but we don't know the dates yet.
No, nope.
So.
Right, but, but right now, we know it's in June, so they don't need to be putting out anything in March.
Yeah.
I know, it's, of course, it's true, yes.
Alrighty.
Um, so we'll wait on the flyer?
We're gonna wait on the flyer, but it does limit it to one pickup truck load, that looks, I would, but you guys. Good stuff, thank you for updating that. Put all the stuff on top of my agenda, maybe.
I would even make a pickup truck load if somebody was responsible.
What's that?
What if somebody puts it in their trunk and just makes a budget trip, how do you measure a pickup truck load?
I think once they come and someone's been checking them off.
I have an idea, I know.
It's not a perfect solution.
Probably three trunks or four. Yeah, I was gonna say three or four.
And on the cat.
S U Vs, no, one of those. Two, three, three, both of those.
Yeah. Alrighty, we're gonna go down to the next agenda item, which is the budget, twenty-four, twenty-five selectmen recommendations. And we're not done.
I didn't bring my budget, you should be done, you've met.
Right.
You can finish it right here. I did put an updated one.
Right, we still had some left to do, I just didn't know if we're gonna meet again before.
Oh, okay, when do you wanna meet? Cause they want their books.
I thought that was, we weren't done, I don't think we finished the whole budget that night. We didn't, we had still had several pages to.
Okay, so when do you wanna meet? I have to get it to, I'm meeting the twenty-seventh.
I, I understand, I'm just stating that we did finish the whole budget.
Yeah, it's not too many days.
I made the changes that you, you all agreed on, on the eleventh.
Right, but we still had like several pages left of the budget.
They're mostly road budget, aren't they?
Right, we talked about.
I thought that was a road budget, that was in somebody else's, uh, your house.
So we can meet tomorrow, there's no notice for any month, but.
Yeah, there's no roads.
I did make changes to the beach, I reduced, I had like five grand in there, I reduced that to three, I believe, for the budget, and I raised the revenue. Because I raised.
Cause I don't remember. Like this last change. Written request, I mean, did we recommend to the, all the people that were asking for money, did we, looks like we did, now I don't remember doing that.
I didn't hear you guys saying otherwise, so you can do that now, I don't want to come in.
Well, I guess, I actually do remember going over that thing, because, cause I can remember, uh, in particularly noticing that there were a whole bunch of safe voices and, or, or.
We reviewed it, but we didn't say, let's, let's fund them, that's all.
Bear Pond did submit one, so I saw Pete, those very, so I added that.
Okay, and so, so, and the thing that is, if I remember right. Uh, generally speaking, those are requests from various, uh, agencies and aspects. And, uh, generally speaking, unless it was a specific one that we particularly cared about, say, who's Hartford related, like, say Hartford Dairy Society. We don't make a recommendation, and we would usually use the budget plan. We do, there's no recommendation, we go to the town meeting and the people decide whether or not they wanna pop up the door for this or that.
Mm-hmm, right. That's why I'm asking, is that, it says we, we recommended all these, I was pretty sure that we don't usually put a recommendation forward. David?
On the, um, non-town recommendations.
Yeah.
In the past, they only committed in the circle, have not been.
Right.
Right.
We want the number that's, that they replace.
Right. You have exceptions, I remember a year when the, the budget committee made no recommendation, but the select were recommended to, uh, fund the library. With library, that's important, a lot of good for a lot of meetings. Uh, even, but mostly if I'm, I thought, I mean, most of them even have any specific recommendation. On the other hand, it looks like it's kind of like my big major issue.
So when I check off the warrant for town meeting, I can put whatever you want, which ones you recommend, which ones you don't.
Yeah.
But to get a total budget, we kinda.
And, and what's more, we're gonna be going over this, uh, we're gonna be meeting with the budget committee on the twenty-seventh. And then we're gonna be having, what, four or five budget meetings besides, you know, I, I'm not clear that you need to have a meeting. In between.
It's up to you, I just, I wanted you to make sure this is okay before I give it to the budget.
We did it all.
Uh, we didn't make all these recommendations for the agencies, but. If you guys are comfortable going to a budget committee with, as long as you take the selectmen.
I am, because we're gonna have, we're gonna have like five, it's like budget committees, so I just don't see that as.
I'll, I'll just take them out for now and then, just.
I'm serious with you.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the, um, town report cover dedication in spirit of America and moderator.
Yeah, I did run into Terry Hayes, I don't know who we are thinking about for a moderator, but she did put it on her calendar just in case.
I think that's a great idea, I should dominate Terry Hayes to be our moderator, what do you think?
Well, I don't think she did, I think we didn't make a cure. Um, I know that Scott Colvin also is going to serve.
And Richard Pickett has always offered to.
Well, if Terry's already got our schedule, I'm happy to. You don't even have to make a call, because I just confirmed.
Up to you.
She did a good job last year.
She has to come back and get her glasses that she forgot.
Oh, she got her glasses, that's something that might do.
When was the last time she did that with?
Terry last year. Yes.
I think she did, and I think she did.
Oh, she has. Oh, yeah, I said, I think she did.
Yeah, she did a good job.
No, I'm, I'm, you know, I remember.
I can give her a call and let her know she's on set.
Out behind the school, it was, it was twenty, 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 twenty-one, and, and we met up behind the school, so, oh my.
You okay?
Okay. Spread the love to somebody else who's like that.
No, I'm, I'm all right.
She did a very good job.
I'm good.
Good one.
She's good, she's got a good sense of humor, she keeps us in the room.
Okay, um, town's all for dedication and spirit of America award?
Mm-hmm, we need to figure that out soon.
Is that something we do here in front of everyone or?
Mm-hmm. Well, I have your surveys that I give you.
Yeah, I know what I pick, but, and I know what they put.
Lorraine Parsons was in yesterday and suggested for the cover, a picture of Thompson. Thompson Cemetery and Fuller Cemetery, like, side by side.
Ken?
Uh, I appreciate Lorraine's, um. Idea, because those are two cemeteries that we completely did last year. And, you know, letting you a point, we still have a lot of work to do, I could send, not ready for a picture yet. But I was, as you probably remember, suggested that instead of honoring. Just one committee or whatever, I would suggest that we honor all committees that dedicate their time volunteering for the town. And just list them by name, the individuals that are on the committee, on the cover. And maybe have a picture of the town hall or something, that's just a suggestion, you know, um, instead of singling out one.
The dedication part is usually written over inside the cover. Dedicated to, usually it's this person who is coming especially.
Okay, so dedication and the picture are two different things.
Yes, sir.
So.
Generally speaking.
I, I don't mind, I, I just would like to make sure the picture is on a nice, sunny day, so the white stones show up well, because they, they do look, it looks too sensitive.
They look great.
The Fuller and Thompson. But I would like to see all volunteers and all, maybe, maybe we prefer one of you. At that point, in the side of the cover, that you have open seats on bulky waste and whatever, out of seats that might be open. Anyone interested. Might have a page with a form, they could fill out.
Yeah, well, you know, something, I think that might be a good idea for the Hartford news, but, you know, let's not forget that the town report is, uh, is an historical record. You know, it's not necessarily what you, you, uh, print up, so when somebody tears out a page and, and turns it into, uh.
Couldn't still ask to. Hey, Richard?
Yeah, I, you're discussing the cover for the, this year's book, how about Nancy Sullivan?
How about?
Should it fit on the cover?
No, I guess you could.
What about it?
Put her on the cover.
I know. Why? How'd you come up with that, Richard?
What?
How did you come up with that?
Well, she's been around like forever and she's been on committees and done a lot for the town. I realize she's only here half the year, but, uh, she's been a, a long time. Resident participant in the town of Hartford, I just thought maybe she'd be a good candidate.
Thanks for that.
Also, dedicated.
Moral?
I think there are a lot of people who have lived in this town who have seriously funded me for a long time. So, I, I don't know, you know, I know she was a rep, uh, for.
Percentage.
But I don't know.
Not for us.
Really, how many made the dedication, dedicating to the town?
Well, you know, and, and so, so, uh, one of the things we have often done is we've shown, had a picture of somebody, uh, Cindy's mom. Yola was on the cover and so was, uh, uh, Bev Murphy, and I was thinking of, any number of other people, usually costumes.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, when he said that about Nancy Sullivan, I thought, oh my God, she died and had no idea.
Yes, Lenny?
I just think the cemetery is a great idea, because they were a mess for so long and they look so great now, even though Ken says Hartford's someone isn't ready for a picture yet. It's.
Still looks so much better than.
Just shine when I walk by there, I love that idea, just if you care.
And they're also, they're also.
And they're also good.
That's true.
That sounds like a great.
You could even put some flags in those pictures.
Yeah.
How does anybody feel like that, that? Dedicate your town for a bit?
He's sure worked in the town for a long, long time.
Doesn't he have dedicated, yes, he did.
No, for dedication, no.
Well, I mean, he's getting paid to do his job, it's a job, so he's being paid to do that, it's not like he's volunteering his service. He does a lot of free work that we don't know about. Don't we all, don't we all, when we do a job, go loving beyond, you know?
Moral?
That's our nature, as most people. But put me in, she's amazing, her assistant.
I agree.
With an A T B in the background.
Okay, hold on, moral?
No problem.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Richard, Richard, how are you?
Dedication.
Oh.
Co- cover and dedication, right?
And spirit of America.
And spirit of America, we're trying, do you wanna die?
I'd like to suggest Polly for one of them, she just revived to the Hartford Food Bank. And she does so many jobs, she has done so many events at Summers for people. And she used to do a Christmas dinner here for people before the COVID struck. Yeah, she just really.
Yeah, like spirit of America?
Yeah, spirit of America.
That sounds about right to me, and I'm, I'm the one who, if you look at your, so, I'm the one who put Polly's.
Oh, there.
I'm sorry. Well, I put it on, down there as dedicated, but, you know, spirit of America, but that didn't work.
So can I just summarize, if we could do the, um, front cover is what people suggesting out of the cemeteries. Um, and dedication with volunteers on the inside, and spirit of America for Polly. I mean, is that what ideas came through?
That's what I'm hearing.
Do I need to make a motion? Is this one okay? How about this?
You can do better with that.
I could, you know, I'd do much better with a mask on. Oh, moderator, Terry Hayes is already in it, been mentioned to, what she said, yeah? So do I need to like make a motion, no?
Oh, for this, yes.
Okay. Okay, so can I make one motion for all three?
Let's not do Polly.
Oh, yeah. Well, I asked everyone when we got in here if we were supposed to do this in front of everyone and he said yes. So, okay, so I'd like to make a motion.
Some men just don't know how to zip it.
Some men just can't keep their mouth.
I said so.
Okay, so the emotion is that the cemetery, the beautiful cemetery that have been worked on beyond the front cover. Whether that be two or three, because I think Hartford Center would be beautiful. The Irish name. The second one would be the dedication would be all the volunteers that are volunteering here in town. And then with a request at the bottom of that volunteer list saying, please volunteer, we have openings. And then Spirit of America for. Wait a second. All in favor? And Lenny's happy with us. We've got stuff done. The administrative ordinance part two amendments.
So I added that the ordinance committee suggested about the rep committee. That's the only thing I changed from the last meeting.
The rep committee, is it open for volunteers?
And the changes are. Observe activities.
That I noticed is that the rep committee is as with the cemetery committee. Open to people regardless of whether they actually live in Hartford or not. Now, my understanding was in the case of the cemetery community, it's open to members from other towns. Was it was open to members, the membership of people from other towns if they had relatives who were. Who were buried within town of Hartford. In the case of the recreation committee, is there any?
I think they took that out, so it's not out of towners. They can, they can volunteer, but they're not.
I didn't get that note.
They're not committee members.
They're not committee members. They can volunteer to help, but they're not voting committee members. To make sure. I was at that meeting and Bim and Jeremy both had very good reasons why they and Lou. Very good reasons why they thought that.
No, I didn't take that out. I don't remember hearing that.
I think the proposal was that at the ordinance committee that. That it would be like a sports boosters and out of towners could, could be a part of the committee. But that they wouldn't be voting members because they also.
With the exception of the cemetery committee and recreation committee. I don't see what says anything else about it.
Well, I think we need to, I missed that, go back to. Because that's, that's not what the, that's not what the ordinance committee had voted on that night, because I was.
Well, you know, I mean, ordinance committee is advisory, remember that. We think about this, but I guess I'm wondering if. You know, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, that there's nothing in here saying specifically that an out of town member of the.
So nothing in here says that it's out of town people.
All members of committees.
Right, so they're not in here.
No, it was said to add these two paragraphs.
Right, but nothing in here says that they're going to be allowed out of towners on that committee.
Alright, so you guys tell me exactly what you.
But there's no change about. The membership of, the membership of the recreation committee doesn't say anything. Other than the words and the recreation committee, you know, all, all members of committees would be accepted.
But this is what Bonnie put in and there isn't anything about out of towners that we took it out at the committee meeting. Bim and Jeremy and Lou and Bonnie took it out.
But if you recall, the cemetery committee, the advisory committee, and it's really us.
Right, I'm just telling you what the ordinance committee did when Kathy and I were there, which. We proposed or put forward that did you want out of people, out of town people and the committee had said. That doesn't really make sense. They can volunteer, but they shouldn't be making decisions on. You know, buck your people coming up and saying, well, we're going to use all these fields. It was more of they could volunteer for the activities that the recreation committee is supporting, like swimming. And so parents from Hebron Station want to come and help volunteer, we would be happy with that, but they wouldn't be voting members. On the Hartford Rec Committee.
But put those paragraphs in there if you go down a couple of pages, but do you want me to remove that? And the rep committee? When it says.
You know, I could maybe stop.
I would.
Okay, what about? What did you say about the number of members? Is it unlimited?
No, I, like, it seems to me that there was no minimum, no maximum. And I think the maximum is a good idea, you know, if we had, had, I mean, I don't think we're ever gonna have forty eleven. I think we can have, you know, two, three, four, half a dozen. I mean, it's hard for me to imagine the recreation committee getting more active than that.
Dan?
Just want to say from my experience on cemetery meetings since we've added, like, we know. And a lot of people that have bossed or have been his boss, we're able to do so much more. We have ten members. So if that type of situation, I think could help the recreation committee. But I understand that you can't put in a provision like that we have in the cemetery committee, so.
Cemetery committee is just such a special thing. Though, I mean, I guess all committees are special in their own way, but the cemetery committee is. You get down in already and by gosh, it has a certain focus.
What, when, what I love is none of the people you help in the cemetery ever complain. They're smiling.
I actually feel happier.
Okay, so if I remove those four words. That'll be good.
Creation committee, I'm in the fifth paragraph. Um, I think so, because I, I don't see why we'd need to, it says say minimal five members and. That would be nice, although we know there are other committees in which also the ordinance says shall have minimal five members and in fact. That's a bit of a struggle. A solid waste comes to mind, you know, there's not actually five members at this time.
But there are going to be some parents of swimmers that want to help.
Recreation committee, but we like to hope it's been a two, it's been a two person committee for a long, long time.
But they all say you must have five members.
Right, and that is, let's just say that's aspirational. That's what we hope for. Not necessarily what we always have.
So if I take those four words out, sending it, send it on to Dan.
The rest of it all looks pretty good. I mean, of course, you know, a lot of it is.
Can you just make a motion for me to send it to the lawyer because that costs money?
Our move that we asked Lian to send this on to the lawyer gives the changes that we just recommended.
I second that. Alrighty. And I've got that open session.
Two messages from people on Zoom who weren't tweeting. The end of the Darlington Road discussion managed.
That means the select board will meet at our next select board meeting and put forward. Based on all the feedback today on whether we're going to vote on it in town meeting.
Okay, so it's rather or not, it'll be warrant, but.
Right, well, it didn't get said, it was, I think it was just supposed. That, but that the hearing was all about whether or not we would move forward and put them on an article.
They have to sign an order to place it on the article if they want.
I, I just wondered because it felt like it just was anyone.
Well, you know, it was only a half hour meeting, half hour was five very fast.
Maybe, and you have something you want to.
Yeah, I, I was too late to get on the agenda, so I'm wondering if I.
It's an open session.
Next one. The ATV probably wondering if we would be able to have a kiosk here at the parking lot that would give information and stuff. The trade halls, the, the businesses that sponsor us and stuff like that.
Shall we put that on the agenda?
Yeah, I was too late to, when I called Monday. I just wondered if that's something that might be a possibility to do.
Put it on the next agenda. Yeah, I think that's again, I think April fourth.
Meeting is, our meeting is April fifteenth on Monday here. It's a meet and greet and. Um, we're hoping to do a food drive for the food bank.
Oh, wonderful.
By having people bring candy or goods or something to donate and get in, in a drawing or what we're planning on doing, so. Hopefully we'll get something to donate to the food bank.
Yeah, awesome. Um, so if that's the end of open session, anyone else okay? New business, free sale, May thirty first and Lenny's in charge of that and she would like permission to use this. Oh, hi, Lenny.
But it's, it's actually a whole weekend, so it would be, let me look at my calendar. Because we bring stuff in Friday night.
So it's Friday through Sunday.
Yeah, we were talking about May thirty first, like four seven, we bring stuff in, then. June first would be actual binning day and then Sunday, June second would be the cleanup. And it feels early, but Lian needs the next weekend to set up for voting. And then the following weekend we have a town meeting. And then it's open, so.
So.
Got a year.
Okay.
Okay, so that it's actually three days. I just wanted to be clear about that.
You need that someday. You better have that. You gotta have time for people to come in.
If I remember right, we've been still cleaning up on, on Monday.
Is a select board in agreement that this will be a town sponsored event with Lenny as the chairwoman? Yes, I need to make a motion for that. I'd like to make a motion.
Include insurance and fees and.
That the upcoming free sale, which would be the May thirty first. Through June first, I mean, through June second, be a town sponsored, town of Hartford sponsored event. That the town will be covering the insurance and the rent as a community service. Um, and Lenny will be the chairwoman.
Can that be made as a yearly event?
It has been so hard.
Without having to go to vote every year.
Oh, no, we always have to.
It's not something we have to put on the town we do warrant and this is just something we do on the select board. It's not a good deal, just like that.
And we'll put you on the cover. So, I'll, we made the motion to add the second. All right, all in favor? All right, ordinance committee members versus employees. I know we have a resignation from an alternate to go. And fill the position of Nancy Sullivan by Cindy Viola. And. I know that Lenny attended a MMA workshop where they talked about. Discouraging employees of the town sitting on committees. Do you want to share any of that, Lenny?
It's not a rule or anything. I mean, the MMA does not tell towns what to do. But in the training for planning boards and. Appeals board, they talked more about ordinance than they did about either of those boards. And one of the comments that there was a question from we participants wasn't my question. About committee members who are town employees and it was discouraged. They don't make rules, but it was discouraged to have that because it could be perceived as.
Could be a conflict of interest.
Right, exactly.
I know, but it's really difficult to get members to be on committees, so it is a tough call.
An employee could always consult.
Select board, what do you? Any thoughts, suggestions? Just want to have a conversation or just move forward.
Is it more than one committee?
So maybe just go association.
I don't know, maybe talk about the, the employees. Do we have more than one committee where there are employees on a?
Do we have more than one employees that are on different committees?
I used to be on a committee, like cemetery committee.
No, Bim's on ordinance right now. Yes. Can you stand up? Because I just love staying next to so tiny.
Um, Victoria and I were just talking because she's not relevant on here, but as Lenny's sort of instructors. I'm very far time, like two weeks in summer. But now we're up starting now, I'd love to consider a committee, but is that two week? Employment status wait for nothing for a week.
You're fired. Good, because we're kind of hoping you're going to help with that rep committee. Because that would make a lot of sense.
Right, so, so there, there, there we have it, remember. Are they too employed to become members of the committee? Or are we stipulating, we're going to say, nope, no employees on the committees? Or.
I would think she wouldn't be on the committee for the two weeks she's working for us.
It's not a law.
Because she's going to be teaching.
As Lian just said, it's not a law. On the other hand, we do have at least one other notable employee on, on a fairly. High stakes committee and if we, if solved for the goose, if solved for the game, it would be a problem for us.
Yes, my question is the conflict of interest of what committee that particular employee is on. I mean, you can't put an employee on a budget committee. You, you know what I mean? I mean, certain.
Right, but like cemetery committee, yeah, but. I just referred to, to what I mean as a high stakes.
Well, any, I mean, the ordinances, I mean, it's going to depend on what that person's job is and how it's going to affect. We're going to change some ordinances to benefit what they do for a job. I mean, you better, it's a timeline of, of how people take advantage of what new situation they can move in on, you know. Just be careful of that. Do we want to get into a situation like Sumner? I mean, you don't want that kind of stuff. You've got to kind of watch. This is our money, which that, that people, you know, nothing, not. But I'm just saying, just being careful is, is the conflict of interest and.
And that was the discuss.
Yes, exactly, exactly. I mean, look at Sumner and the, the, was it committees that they were on that. How they were able to. Steal money.
I know there's a lot of situations where even the select board could be a conflict, but they abstain. They abstain when it relates to any their business or.
They, when there was something going on that even appeared to be a conflict.
Yeah.
Important for them to be there too.
Ken?
Conflict of interest will concede conflict.
Right.
They're really the same, whether there is or it's just perceived, so perception is reality.
Yeah.
Well, probably better not.
To be consistent, maybe it would be best, like in the rec committee, that. During that two weeks, being an employee, that you don't share it on the rec committee, might not even have a meeting during that two weeks, consistent with. That is an employee for three hundred sixty-five days, and yours is much different than fourteen days.
Right.
But to be consistent.
Well, and the red committees are different from.
You, you can't make an exception for one and not another, to, to me, so you need to cover the perceived conflict.
However, if someone wasn't voting, never.
Well.
Then.
Then.
There, there would be no conflict.
They should just abstain if it relates to anything.
The other option is to abstain, yeah, that's the same thing with the Select Board.
Could we put that in ordinance, just that the employee is serving on a committee that, if it affects their job, that they need to abstain from?
I could ask the lawyer to word it, do you include?
I mean, they obviously covered it a lot at Lenny's, uh, training, so we don't wanna ignore that, that's the reason why they did that.
Yeah.
Probably because of instances before.
And it was, if the question is on a much bigger towns, but I just picked up on it waiting, we wanna be really.
We do have to be careful, we wanna be an up board and transparent. Good work.
For both parties, I mean, not saying for the employee.
Yeah, right, everybody's talking at once. Sorry, so would, would, can we, um, have you reach out to the attorney and see? If there's some sort of ordinance we can write, or something that says that if an employee sits on a committee, then if it. That would be an amendment to the, the, the. We have a administrative ordinance that basically states all the rules around. That's why we, we're just looking at it, uh, around members of the recreation committee, uh, you know, and so. When we did just, I, they found the person who moved to have her take and send it right off to the lawyer. Now, if you want to, uh, I mean, we could rescind that right now, and then take it back and start working on it again. But Jack's gonna send us back the rules, so I, I'm not sure how we want to go about this.
Can I just say, based on the seriousness of the discussion at that training, which was four hour, half hours long. I would suggest they be non-voting members, just a suggestion, based on how seriously they were taking it.
So the, so nobody has to give up the membership, that they would be a non-voting.
Right.
But if you need a quorum, you're gonna have someone that can vote, so.
They're an option, they'd just be, if you want to keep them on the committee.
Right, I don't believe we're gonna be able to keep them on committees, they can't vote.
Yeah, uh, and then, and therefore, you've got a fine.
Well, I understand, I'm just.
Yeah, i- if they won't go on to be there because they can't vote, there's already a fine.
I'm not disagreeing with you, whatsoever.
It isn't big to me, it was big to them.
So do we wanna? Do we want to take back the ordinance and, and work it over some more? I think that, it was basically what we're looking at. But don't we wanna vote on this at town meeting for rec committee or? Um, yes, we do, but you know, uh, but if we just sent it to the lawyer, which we just did, I mean, obviously, she had her chance to send it, yeah, yeah. But, uh, if what you want to do is move to take that motion back. And we'll work on language that excludes employees from being committee members, then. I guess I'd have to say that, uh, the time ago, it was, was fifteen minutes ago, but now would be the next, next time. But administrate, the ordinance committee doesn't meet till the third. So is that something that we do or the? You know, as I've said a couple of times, the ordinance committee did a great job, they ran an advisory committee. I think if we wanted to make a change to the ordinance. How can I put this, they work for us, we'll work for them. And it, it's really up to us, if we think that we should add that to the, uh, the ordinance. In order to, uh, keep our collective nose clean around, uh, employees on committees, then, uh, perhaps we should, uh. We just come up with a wording and add that in, right now. Great, well, certainly, since we just made the motion to, to send it to the lawyer, we'd have to rescind that first. Yeah. And then what we do from there is think of how do you wanna do that, how do you find something you wanna do on the fly right now? As soon as we get quite a number of items still ahead of us. Yeah. And are we still in open session, please, I'm praying? Nope. Yeah, with your con, with us, ordinance committee members and employees.
I suggested having the lawyer word it for us, and then you can always change it.
Uh, you know, I, that might not be, that might be the best way to do it, so send it to the lawyer and ask him to, um, file a warning. He can come up with like words.
Is that okay, and then if you don't like it, we can always change it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so I make a motion, we amend that, so that the lawyer also adds an employee provision on committees.
Don't say you're gonna allow them to be on committees?
No.
Oh.
It's just the office.
Okay, thank you.
We're sending it to the lawyer, when the lawyer sees it, and those who want to discuss employees on committees, they're gonna say. Let's, let's put some other wording.
Was there a second, wait, was there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it. All in favor?
Maybe I didn't understand, I'm gonna ask for clarification, but does that exempt them while they're employed? Example. Being able to vote, let's, is it, they can't be on any committee, if they're only employed for two weeks?
That is, that is the question, and. You know, so if it's in the ordinance, then maybe it's gonna be hard and fast. But if she only works for their two weeks, she can volunteer on the committee as a non-voting member, and as soon as she's done working for the town, she can be on the rec committee.
I wasn't clear that was why you were asking to implement.
Yeah, but she could, she could try to get rules passed that affect.
Right, that's right.
Well, the recreation committee is, uh, again.
They're all, they're all advisory.
Right.
Well. There, there is, there is the big difference between a board and a committee, a committee is advisory, and board has legal responsibility.
And remember that planning boards are not mandatory.
Why don't I ask the Sl- the lawyer for suggestions in this area?
Okay.
Somebody comes up.
That's a great idea, okay. All right, moving on to generator repair, our generator is broken, for those who didn't know. We have no way at this very moment to. Be a backup, we got a really long extension cord. And Kathy had, had some people come in, my Kathy, you want to get from here?
I had, Flanders coming to look at it, and they said, the oil pump was gone. So we could either put, replace it, a new motor, and buy another generator, new generator. So we want. Yes, we want a second engine, who feels electric out of fiber, coming this morning. And he did just about everything we could do to it, testing this and that, and. Come up with the same thing, the oil pump is gone. Flanders gave us a price.
Had to get, are you gonna be putting this out to bid, are you gonna tell everybody what the price?
No.
I don't know what you do.
I don't think it's that much, putting it out to bid would be the.
Well. If we're get, if we're getting three estimates.
For, right.
Should we be?
Yeah, no.
I know.
But we're gonna fix it.
I don't know.
Well, anyways, uh.
So, 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 can I, can I have one more?
Yes.
My understanding is that our choices are either A, do we fix the unit that we have? Or B, do we get a whole brand new one? And if we want to get a whole brand new one, there are homeland security grants available, that's who bought this one for us. And homeland security grants are available, but we have to three estimates in order to do that. At this time, am I correct in saying, you know, two estimates?
Yeah.
And these are estimates of repair. So we'll have three next week, so, so if she's right, we probably shouldn't be discussing the prices that people gave us.
There's gonna be two estimates each, one repair and one install and new one.
Yeah. Thirteen years old, thousand eleven. Uh, seems kind of young, but. So, um, Fields, when I was out there with Kathy for a short time, um, said that, thought that the generator was worth fixing. But if we do put in a new one, we're gonna have to adapt the building, since new codes, so if we put in a new one, the building. The outdoors and open space, not that, not, uh, under the top, but, uh, so, uh.
Right now, as it is, I asked him if we would have to do anything to the building that it's in. As far as calls go. He said, right now, no, that was grandfathered, from what the codes are now. But if we put in a new one, then we have to do some different arrangements to the building.
So, the grant process is due April fifteenth to this outside group, who then are gonna submit it. It's months away before we would get approved, which hopefully we would get approved, that'd be really great. We're hoping that our, uh, emergency management person, Dan, will put it in, um, cause that's a part of his responsibility. Um, but in the meantime, if we just do nothing and wait to see if we get the grant, we don't have a backup power source. Well, we're almost out of, uh, out, out of, yeah, I know March Williams can take out the power pretty quick, but we're almost out of. Takes out our most, our time, but, but you know, the thing with it is, that, you know, and, and even at thirteen years old. That thing is running for what, uh, twenty minutes every new time on Wednesday? And then occasionally, we had power outages and lasted. Ten fifteen minutes, no, not long, so it has a power on self-test every week, self-test, it starts up to make sure everything's all good. Brings it up to operating temperature and then shuts down.
Did.
What?
It did.
It used to be. Well, until it broke, until it broke, but, uh, it's still, it's not a very, uh, it's not a very old. And Fields said it was definitely worth putting the new engine in, but we don't have those prices yet. Right, well, it does strike me that, that, uh, I am more a new engineer. Uh, uh, I'm more, maybe more good, the new engine will need.
I was serious about the storm that's supposed to hit us Saturday, and what do we do?
Stay home.
No, it's the generator does.
It's not gonna be that, not for that one.
This is me, you've lived through your entire.
Calm down, I'm talking about, do we have anything if this storm is wild as they say it's gonna be, nor Easter?
I don't think it's gonna be that cold for that long, I don't think the pipes.
We can bring it, we can bring down a little.
That was your concern.
Are you looking at me, I can't see.
How cold it is and.
Yeah, to keep the pipes from freezing.
Okay.
We're still in March, I don't think it's gonna get that cold. Moral, you had your shit, hold on, moral.
Yeah, uh, if I understand, the alternator is alright, the, uh, automatic cooking deal is alright, it's just the motor is bad.
It's the oil pump.
Oil pump.
Yeah, right, now, I'm not sure, um, how we, uh, replace that.
Couple of.
The oil pump is gone, I mean, it, perhaps it's been a lot of that shut down, the oil pressure, I think, okay? So maybe the motors are alright, if somebody ought to replace it, we'll replace that oil pump. Now, do you know what kind of motor that is, engine?
It's a Siemens. Siemens.
No, no, it's, no, the engine is probably not a Siemens, the Siemens is a, it's a brand name or, or the Europe product.
Oh, I don't know.
So, so you, you know that have a pole or a turnabout or something like that, or, or a cat in there or something, it's, it's. You have, you have to look at it, but.
I know it's not a Briggs and Stratton. It's definitely not a Briggs and Stratton.
Okay, so.
Which is a positive.
Can you get an, uh, estimate for?
They're coming in. The, the, the estimates are coming.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the problem. It takes two, two hours to put it in.
Yeah, that, that for me, because the major thing is the alternator and the switching, okay? That's the multiple, okay, if that's alright, then I go with, yeah, we, motors can't be that bad. I don't know how big that generator is.
Sixteen thousand.
Thirty.
Sixteen?
Fifteen. So you probably got thirty watts more than it, because you're getting running a lot. So.
I asked a guy.
I mean, that might be, you know.
I asked a guy today, he come from Fields on that direct, and he's, they're the company that put mine in. And at the end, I mean, he went all through the motions to see if it's the limit switch, oil pressure limit switch. And we checked all of that, not the goal, uh, so I asked him, if, if it was his, what would he do? And then he told me he'd change the motor out. That.
Yeah.
He said that. It'd only take him a couple hours.
Cheap and quick, it's like, if I won't get it done by Saturday, but not all the way through.
On the other hand, I was just looking at the weather report, I mean, you know, it'll be in the twenty, it'll be in the twenties in the morning, but the whole. The whole day, it's gonna be thirty-one, thirty degrees, the inside of the building is not gonna freeze up. Ken?
Can I make a suggestion, you get your third estimate, and go to the votes there to replace the pump?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna replace the pump, we might go with a whole new motor, but, let's see what our estimate's saying. Good idea, alrighty. Yep, so, we all agree that Leanne is gonna put that generator back together and rebuild the engine. She's so good that way. Thank you, Leon, we really appreciate your hard work. So, Leanne, we're gonna wait to the, the generator, um, quotes, but we are leaning towards fixing the engine.
Okay.
Thank you, placing the motor. All right, public hearing zoning, building permit, ordinance amendments.
So do you want to schedule a public hearing before it gets on the warrant? Or do you wanna have the public hearing on the thirtieth with the others, normally a zoning ordinance.
Has its own.
Yeah. In case you hear people's input before you. That's when our June.
And this is the LD two thousand three.
Yeah, it's always, it's already gone to the lawyers, but.
No, it's May thirty-first is the day of the, uh.
Yeah, the.
By, by nothing.
May thirtieth is the hearing.
Okay.
So, do you want to schedule a hearing just for that before May thirtieth? Or just include it in that, we won't be able to change the ordinance on May thirtieth, because the town reports will be.
Right, right.
Already printed and.
Well, we thought, we thought, I don't know, it seems like Peggy might appreciate having her own special hearing on that, because she's worked pretty hard on this. And if we do it sooner, it can get into the town report?
And you could make changes to it.
We'd still, we, in other words.
Depending on what people.
If we wait until the last minute, we, we kind of don't have much choice. It's a well-done deal, whereas if we have the hearing sooner, then we can, can be a little later on our feet if we want to. Uh, if, if, uh. So why don't we do the suggestions, say, oh no, let's do it a little differently, or something like. What if we do the hearing on our, on April eighteenth, which is our second Select Board meeting of the month, and we could do it at six thirty?
We just have to send notices to all the butters of the areas that are going to be changed, I don't know when she's gonna have that done.
Well, that's a lot.
Has to be a two-week notice.
That's a lot, uh, do, do you think that's soon enough, or should we be going late? Or should we be going later than that? Should we have a, a separate hearing? What would you suggest, Leon?
I know the town report's going to the printers early May, so.
Okay, so we don't want it too late either. Well, we're not in, in April yet.
And she needs two weeks. We need two weeks to notify the abutters.
Two weeks notice and then, and the newspaper for zoning.
For, for the, uh, growth areas that she's gonna.
Yeah, and all the landowners and the areas that are gonna be changed on the maps.
Which is quite.
Be known by that.
Which is quite good.
So it would have to be in April, but I don't know, it's almost safe.
Hmm. Um, well, we don't want to have it go any sooner in April because there's gonna have to be a certain amount of research into how many properties and, and who they are and.
Maybe we should just keep them May thirtieth.
But then it's not gonna write on the book, right?
Peggy and I worked on.
Yes.
And the abutters.
Yes, we do have a member of the planning board here who might like to weigh in.
We, we went by what was in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And we got hold of the maps and we mapped out all of the properties that were affected.
And, am I correct?
And those people who are affected by that need to be.
Right, that's what we're talking about, whether, how close you are, knowing who those people are, and how quickly we can get letters out to them.
Well, we, I mean, I have it on the computer at home and of course Peggy does too.
When were you planning to notify them?
The names of all the people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When were you planning to send them letters?
Uh, I thought Peggy and I would have told you about that.
Well, no. I was talking to Peggy just before.
Well, it's a month from right now, if we did the hearing on the eighteenth, could she get them out in the next two weeks?
We do it. The planning board does it.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. I'm new, I'm new, that's why I went to give training.
And we don't use it, right, but I mean, this is a new, such a new.
This is a, this is a new one, I mean, I've never seen the planning board get letters out to a, 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 a brand lot of people, I think this is, this is our first rodeo in that department.
Well, we provide the, the stamps.
Yeah, yeah.
And the envelopes.
We get a phone with her and tell her we need to get on this.
Yeah, I, I would say.
We'll get in touch with you, Leanne, is that right?
Yeah, but I can't make the decision.
Can we, can we?
Who records?
Can I commit to the eighteenth for the public notice?
For the hearing?
Hearing.
I don't know, check G P T.
Do you wanna call, do you wanna call Peggy right now?
Uh, okay.
I'm just trying to get decisions made, we're a small town, we can move on a down here. Or a quarter.
There's zoning ordinances. Just the laws, if you wanna look at it.
I thought we did, did we look at the new LD stuff that she.
This is the rules about how to note hearings of zoning or head to.
Should I put her on speaker? Let me push it.
Peggy?
Yep.
Aren't you something?
I sound bad. Hi Peggy, it's Lenny, I'm at the select board meeting and we're talking about getting letters out to the people affected by the, um.
New zoning.
The new zoning growth maps you did.
Yes.
Okay, there's a question for you.
Yeah.
So Peggy, this is Sue, um, we have to set up a date for a public hearing.
Yes.
Um, and we were thinking about April eighteenth and it would be, you know, the, the U show. But we would have to give notice, two weeks' notice to the abutters to let them know that we're doing a public hearing. Is April eighteenth realistic? That's a month from now.
Okay, well, Lenny and I already went through and figured out all the, uh, laws involved, so all we need to do is go back through it and, uh, look at the maps and figure out the, the abutters.
Well, we, we can get that right up, O'Donnell, but we have to write a letter. Can we get that letter done?
You have to, I think you have to.
Yeah. I mean, how long does it take to write a letter?
Well.
Well, 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 you know Peggy, I think we got this, but we just thought we'd check with you.
We don't, we didn't wanna go ahead and make a decision without you, darling.
Make sure I was made around, that's all.
Okay, all right, so we got this? All right, so you're saying we've got this?
April eighteenth at six thirty.
Okay.
Really?
Good work, very efficient.
Yeah.
So, good job.
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah, okay, I will message you about getting together.
So it's gonna be thirteen.
April eighteenth, six thirty.
Okay.
Thank you Peggy.
Okay.
Bye.
So, um, so, we're going to do the public hearing, uh, um, it has the people, the abutters have to be notified thirteen days before the public hearing, that'd be, the post suggests to be thirteen days ahead. Um, and the notice must be published at least two times in a newspaper. Do, 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 at least seven days before the hearing.
Where was the advertising that we put up? Where is the zoning that you're doing?
It's all, it's all the comprehensive plan.
It's, it's growth areas.
There are several, there are several identified growth areas that were adopted as an ordinance in two thousand and eight when we.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do a public hearing on April eighteenth at six thirty in regards to the, um, the new, uh, whatever I wanna call it.
Building permit.
The building, is that what it's called? Yeah, the hearing, uh, zoning building permit ordinance amendments, which is LD two thousand.
Okay, and so this is just prior to the select.
Yep, at six thirty.
And, and, I'm not correct in, in thinking that, uh, comprehensive plan is on our website? So if anybody who's curious about what exactly those growth areas are, can go to the website and look up the comprehensive plan.
Well.
No.
All in favor? Wonderful, April eighteenth, be there, be square, everybody.
Instead of planning, they were to provide the new maps with, which they have.
Yep. Um, we're moving on to the ASCOT, uh, ballot, the slate of officers.
I got the notice, but they never sent the ballot, but not yet anyway, so that's.
So that was an eighty-one.
Let's table that until the next time.
We don't have the, we got the notice, but no ballot, okay. So that'll go to the next meeting.
We know what the slate of officers is anyway.
And, um, the next on the agenda is our food bank is, we've got some great financial information, everything we needed came in this week. Thank you to Polly and to Bill Glass. Is there any other information, anyone? I know they're doing a fundraiser, Polly's got a beautiful quilt she's doing.
Awesome.
And donations are always welcome at the food bank, by the way.
So what they sent you, is that passable?
Oh, absolutely, you didn't get it at all?
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, I got a nice reply back from Phil too, so. All right, the next on the agenda is the executive session, but we already did that with.
No, no.
Oh, that's a different one?
No, uh, this morning, I was gonna use, oh, this is a different, sorry.
Yeah, this is different, all you have to do is say that we're gonna go into the executive session, but. They weren't, you know, to do that, what? Do you, do you want to?
We wanna jump ahead and get the rest of it done and then?
Yes.
There's not much else going on, it's actually, they are, all we have to do is appointments and reservations. There.
Yeah, so we'll jump over that and go to appointments and reservations.
We accept the, uh, resignation, Cynthia Violet, as all, all to the ordinance committee.
What's second? All in favor? All opposed?
Done.
Done. So, do we now have to recommend her to be a regular station? Would you drop and sign that form while you're here?
Um. For clap, it's like this.
I.
I would like to appoint.
I would like to appoint Cindy Violet to the ordinance committee to fill Nancy Sullivan's charge.
They have to say it first.
You know, so. All in favor?
Wait to fill.
Nancy Sullivan's case. She's already signed.
Yeah.
Who's second? I didn't.
All in favor?
Good.
That is it.
Regular meeting is over.
And that's right.
Yeah.
And you know what that means, that means good night all, thanks for coming.
Get out.
Um, I was trying to put in a nice way. So there's your right to come on past.
I'm gonna use restroom after she. I think all that so far, there's a main bar, he's like, the bar goes from the center. I'm sorry, the break isn't also like, oh gosh. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to pick, I'm trying that. Yeah, I'm on it, yeah. Oh.
I really do.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's not one right now, but it's, um, we say, then come to the discussion.
You have to, of course, donate some of it, you know, in your God. I wore my combination and catch.
You gotta make sure.
You got papers.
Oh, I read this off. Hey, Dave. This is kinda cool.
I know. Not feel this conference on that shoot.
Do this.
I know.
Yeah. It's a way to reach out, like my texts, you know, all kinds of issues, like, down house been closed today, illness or.
Right, that's nice. Crash clutch, the recycling truck program.
So I'll just need a motion to enter into executive session when you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, just where they want.
Oh, they want it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's warm at home, right? Yeah, wow, I don't know, we keep it at sixty-three, it's got like kids in the room and they come over.
Who's called sixty-three? The kids come over and they go, it's so cold in here, and it's like.
Yeah, man.
Put something on.
You don't get colds?
I put, I put clothes on, I just get dressed.
You completely back the last one?
No, they're gonna do that. Yeah, salt and blanket. It's private, it's private.
Execut, executive. It's legally private.
So I just need a motion.
Okay.
Ah, so.
Of course, we just want to come in, this is a donation, they're looking for something for the kids.
It, it really, she wanted very obviously about that, but she called me up about it, she, they were acting, she was acting, hoping that each town would, would, you know, each of the three towns that need to be said, thirty-nine, each town would actually come up with some dollars, tax donation.
Well, the running committee used to give them money, but. And we give them.
She asked me about it, I said, well, we. Correctly for a budget.
Committee, it's a beach, it's a beach. We can't give out money that's not budgeted anymore.
I just figured there's still funds in that.
It's not a rectum, it's beach, we, we budgeted for new buoys and things like that.
Do we have a miscellaneous account we can tap into to give them a donation?
Contingency, but that's not, uh, contingency.
I told her, listen, you know, I, I told her it was gonna be, uh, it might be tight. Because I didn't know where the money would come from.
How much are they asking for?
Anyway, it's anything.
Can we all throw into our bus?
Stop the chair and put the dollar on us. You know what, I'm all over that, I can have these a dollar, money, but it's towards us, personally.
I would.
Well, they know there's forty, I'll, I'll report. I've got some.
You'll do twenty?
We give twenty dollars towards this?
Yeah.
Well, there's. We all just offer five and maybe that hundred bucks. Okay, there you go, well, there you go, there's a hundred bucks, we don't have to, have to even count it.
Okay, so I still need a motion, so I can shut this off.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we.
Go into executive session.
Go into executive session and end the traditional select board.
You have to come back now.
Yeah, no, you just.
You have to come back.
Just going to executive.
Oh, go into executive session.
Going to executive session pursuant to M R S A, top one, title one, chapter thirteen, section four, five.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Is there another second? Cause you made a motion.
Oh, I seconded it. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, phew, okay, let's pony up, guys.
Wait a minute.
Twenty-five bucks.
My money's at the office.
I ain't got one now.
Wait, we turn on the table, what's for them? I've tried to buy wood pellets, so. Wait a minute. Put these guys in there. From what? No, I'll go get it. I can't get rid of Polly.
And we shut the camera.
Oh, there she is.